I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pam, sunshine announcement?
Yes, good evening Acting Chair. Today is Tuesday, September 30th. This is a special Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Bergen Record, El Espeleto, and posted with the city clerk on September 25th of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public.
Thank you.
Here's the sunshine packet. We will mark this into evidence.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Stomato.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Here.
And Acting Chair Gangadin.
Here.
Okay, we have five commissioners present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we surrender staff, please?
Yes.
Any correspondence?
No, Chair. That's all. That concludes secretarial duties.
Thank you, Cam. At this time, I would like to call in case P2024-0088, which is an amendment to the previous approval of P18-120. Address is 87 Bright Street.
Good evening. Stephen Joseph, Kassanakwiglitrami, for the applicant. I did notice this evening, I have notices, I'd like to enter these into evidence, please.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Madam Chair, my notes reflect that we've marked notices previously at various hearings, A1 and A2, which means we are up to A3. Mr. Joseph, do you agree with those markings?
I agree.
Okay. So I am going to receive the affidavit and notice proof of publication with respect to the application this evening. It was renoticed, as this is a special meeting with respect to this application. It does appear to be in order. As such, we're going to mark it as A3 for purposes of the record. And just so the record is clear, I did see this notice updated and posted to the portal. That is the original of that notice, A3 for purposes of the record. Madam Chair, at this time, I think it's only appropriate that, since this is a continuation of a public hearing, there are members of the board that were not at previous hearings of this matter, and I think we should certify that they've either listened and watched the video or read the transcripts which were made available. According to my records, that would be Dr. Desai and Commissioner Stomato.
I have read both.
You did as well, Dr. Desai. Yes? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Joseph?
Counsel, so where we left off last time was, we had finished direct testimony of James Cornell. There was some cross-examination from objectors counsel. But I know we do have the Historic Preservation Officer this evening that does have to leave at a certain time. If we wanted to do that first for the benefit of staff, I also think there's a threshold matter regarding an expert witness that opposing counsel wanted to discuss as well.
So why don't we deal with... Why don't we deal with any housekeeping issues first before we deal with order of witnesses? So I agree, the way we had left it, we were up to cross-examination of your witness. But Counsel, do you want to come up, place your appearance on the record, and address whatever issue counsel was referring to?
Yes, thank you very much. And Anne Studholm of Post Pollock, on behalf of the Opera Van Voort, they're the building at 8385, their condo association. And I wanted to thank everybody for this special meeting. I think it's been really important. You guys know by now how much we've started, stopped, started, stopped. It's great to be here, be able to get as much on us as we possibly can. I do have questions for, both for Mr. Cornell and of course for their new architect. And the one thing that I need to bring up on the record is that when Mr. Black, when Cameron was asking us for dates, I said, "Well, the only problem I had with the 30th," and I didn't want to be the holdup of that, is our fireman witness, who has been here time after time after time after time, as things have gotten inevitably put off. He was going to be traveling, and I wasn't sure he would be back in time. He is back, he has COVID, and he's actually sick with it. He's not just testing positive. He can't come, obviously, to a public gathering. So we don't have him tonight. I don't want that to hold this up. I understand your chair also had a prior commitment. And so what we think would make sense in this situation, and I do apologize for getting so heated with Mr. Santo last time. I'm really glad we have the chance to have this hearing now, just about a year after since it started. But unfortunately, I would like to be able to bring my fireman witness back. His testimony isn't long, but I think it's very important. Mr. Black has advised me that the next available date is November 25th. Brian Shaw, the fireman, has always, with warning, been able to arrange his schedule. He tells his boss, "Put me on a day shift because I have a night hearing." So he won't have COVID again by then, I hope, end of November. He should be available. It shouldn't be a problem. We're happy to do that then, and we're just very sorry for this one wrinkle to have to carry into that next time.
All right. So Chair, I would advise that we take that under advisement. Let's see how far we get. This is the only matter on the agenda. I think that if we can move, we should be able to get pretty far along, if not completed, with that one exception. We'll deal with it at the end of the evening. Chair, I think out of fairness to Ms. O'Neill and her time, we hear from Ms. O'Neill. I know that the board had some questions from, or I guess, to see if Ms. O'Neill had any additional update or information. So I think it's only appropriate that at this time, we have Ms. O'Neill tell us whatever it is that she can. So she's already been sworn.
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I am here this evening mostly to provide the board an updated memorandum at their request regarding the outstanding Historic Preservation related items that were still to be completed. The memo, of course, is essentially an update to the memo that was provided to you in February. There has been no update to any of those items being completed. The, I would say the main issue for preservation staff at this point is the signage on the front. The applicant did provide staff with shop drawings last fall. Staff did approve those shop drawings. The signage has not been installed yet. However, the review mechanism for this would be the certificate of occupancy application. So staff is okay with the signage being outstanding at this time, as long as it is completed prior to them applying for a certificate of occupancy. Other than that, I'm under the impression there were a couple of historic-related questions that I'm happy to answer.
So then, I mean, the... Is the memo that you've generated since the February one on the portal?
Yes.
Okay, that I did not see.
If you would like, I, so I have it in front of me. It's an updated memo, so it really is just one sentence to provide an update, which is that we performed a site visit last week to confirm if any of the items had been updated. They had not been. There was an updated photo that I provided of the property to the board in that memo, just showing that the signage remains incomplete. But staff is confident that if the signage is revised and reinstalled as per the shop drawings that were approved last fall, we are okay with the changes that had previously been approved to the front facade. And at this time, the primary concern for us was the signage, because that is what is visible from the public right of way.
Could you maybe share that? I'm not seeing it on here.
Sure.
Counsel, do we need to enter that as an exhibit? Because I don't think it was on the portal.
It is on the portal. That's where I printed it from.
Oh, but I don't think it was on the portal 10 days prior to the hearing.
Yeah, that doesn't apply to the board, obviously, putting things out. But Counsel, if you'd like, I will mark it as B2, since B1 was the notice. B2 will be the updated HPC memo.
Thank you, Counsel.
And Counsel, you don't disagree with what Ms. O'Neill just said regarding the sign, do you?
No, I don't disagree. We have not done any further work at the property and don't intend to until this hearing is resolved. And we continue to agree to work with Ms. O'Neill on the signage. As Historics staff said, we have shop drawings that were revised and were approved, and that's what we will comply with.
So the, to your point, Ms. O'Neill, the sentence added, "Updated of 9/24." Okay, "HPC staff performed a site visit to evaluate the quote-unquote 'in-progress' items, particularly the sign." It does not appear, and Counsel just addressed that. We're not doing any work until this gets moved forward. But earlier, I mean, it said that initially that your office had recommended this not go forward, and that the board had approved it for two, and that there were other concerns besides the sign. So, and then in reading the transcripts from before, and then having sat on these meetings, there seemed as if there were other things, like the two-story roof addition, construction. And you wrote the memo, so I won't repeat it. So at this, I mean, so other than the sign, though, I mean, are there still outstanding issues or contentions? Or let me make it very simple. Are you recommending or not recommending this move forward at this time?
The hearing move forward?
No, not the hearing. We're going to have the hearing. But your recommendation back in September 2018 was seeking approval, right? And so the application was denied, a certificate of appropriateness. Following four-two, about HPC staff notes that five affirmative votes are required.
So that here, that original hearing, so the HPC, you need five affirmative votes. That original hearing, the staff recommendation was to approve the project, and the board voted. They didn't vote to deny the project, but they did not have affirmative, enough affirmative votes to approve it. I then went to Planning Board and recommended that Planning Board approve the project, even though the HPC did not pass a certificate of appropriateness. And then the Planning Board had adopted, as part of Planning Board's resolution, the conditions that HPC staff had recommended that the board adopt if they were to, the HPC, adopt if they were to approve the project.
And Ms. O'Neill, those are the 12 that are in the memo?
Correct. Yes, there's, yeah, 16.
Ah, 16.
Yeah.
So the Historic Preservation Board did not...
Did not approve the project. They did not deny the project. They did not approve it.
Which is what's needed for the HPC board to recommend that the project be approved. Regardless of that procedure, it then came to the Planning Board, as it does, with the recommendation of the Historic Board as well as Historic Staff. And the Planning Board then determines whether they're going to approve the application or not, adopt some of the findings, all of the findings, all of the recommendations, whatever the case may be. So the Planning Board resolution as to the original application was to approve it with the 16 conditions put forth by the Historic Commission. Is that accurate, Ms. O'Neill?
Yes. And I do just want to clarify, because I don't think it's, now that I'm rereading this, I don't think it's clear. The memo, the memo says in the first paragraph, "And the HPC recommended that the Planning Board deny the project." That means the HPC board, not HPC staff. The staff recommendation going, similarly to how, you know, a planner would say, "I recommend that you approve this." We went to our board and said, "I recommend that you approve this," and they did not agree with us in that case.
So could you on record explain why your board didn't affirm or deny, but your staff or you recommended it?
Sure. Now, I am reaching into the vault for this. I believe the main concern of the HPC, at the time of review of the original certificate of appropriateness, was the visibility of the rooftop addition. The HPC is not in the practice of approving rooftop additions that are visible from the public right of way. In this particular case, because the building is two stories, and because Bright Street is a particularly wide right of way. It's much wider than a normal street, because it's two lanes plus two traffic parking, traffic parking, just parking. The, you could not construct a rooftop addition here without it being visible. So the staff worked with the applicant to come up with a scheme that we thought would be, would reduce its visibility, hence the skylights and the slope of the addition. And we got it to the point where we thought it was an approvable project, which is why we recommended it. The commission did not agree with us.
Now, when you say the commission didn't agree with you, the commission voted for two.
For two, yes.
In favor of it.
Correct.
But...
They did not have enough affirmative votes.
They need five affirmative votes.
It was a majority vote, yes.
For the recommendation to go forward as appropriate.
Correct. The majority of commissioners did vote to approve it. We simply did not have enough affirmative votes.
And then this body voted to approve it.
Correct.
With the conditions as set forth. However, it was not constructed in the manner that was approved, which is why we're actually here.
And the items that, and the item that HPC at this point is taking issue with, or the main issue with, is the reconstruction of the signage in the front.
So when you say HPC, it's your staff and you?
Correct.
Okay. But those other, so since then, and to Counsel's point, the recommendations and the conditions were not fulfilled.
No.
And so hearing that, and then me reading the transcripts for the last three meetings, and being at the last two and watching the video. So there was a lot of talk from the applicant that they were working closely with your office.
Yes.
And that's, as a matter of fact, or, okay, so they were working closely.
They are, they are working closely, right?
Still.
Yeah, so the, as the applicant, when we flagged that the signage was a concern, they went back to their professionals and they presented us with shop drawings of signage that more accurately represented the original historic signage, which was the approval, right? The approval said that they had to reconstruct this signage. So they came to us with shop drawings for that. The signage that is currently on the building as of the 18th, when I went by, was the signage that had originally been installed, that staff flagged as not compliant with their approval. So the applicant has committed to, we reviewed the shop drawings that they gave us last year. We said, "Sure, that is consistent with your approval." And the applicant, as Stephen just said, is committed to revising that prior to their application for CL. There are, of course, other issues that, with the application in front of you guys, that, other changes that they made. The main concern of HPC staff is that front signage, because that is visible from the public right of way.
So the other changes, or the other...
The other two items mentioned in my memo are the green roof and the fire escape in the back, neither of which are visible from the public right of way.
So in your opinion, then, even with the changes, tonight you would, or you would still go ahead and recommend it to go forward, or to be approved?
Well, why don't we rephrase that question? It sounded to me, and Ms. O'Neill, correct me if I'm wrong, from the historic perspective, the only item that you and the HPC are still concerned about is with respect to that sign on the front of the building.
Yes.
The other items and changes?
Need to be approved by this board.
Okay.
We acknowledge that they're incomplete and should be reviewed by this board. The HPC's main concern was making sure that the front facade was restored correctly and accurately. The main part of that that is not completed yet is the sign, which they've committed to restoring accurately.
So just for clarity for myself and for the record, is that through that process in which the applicant was working closely with you, and to the extent that the conditions have not been met, or have been met, I mean, we'll see how that goes, the only one that then seems to fall within your purview or concern is the sign?
Correct.
The other, but let me, but just so for the record, is that, how is it that your office acknowledges that and sort of, and works with the applicant? And if, at any point, did it send off a flag or a concern to you that needed to be communicated to maybe Ms. Tanya or somebody else, or you would just...
For the sign?
No, for all the other conditions in the process, or that...
Oh, okay, so to clarify, there are, I believe it's on the portal. So the applicant did apply for a certificate of occupancy. One of those requirements that the HPC has is they submit a compliance letter to us. It's on the portal, right? This is the compliance letter. We worked with the applicant on a variety of these items that were not compliant.
What's the date of that letter, just for the record?
April 23rd, 2024.
And that letter is from?
The architect, James Cornell, dated to HPC staff.
Okay.
There were a number of items that they identified as not compliant with the plans. They submitted as-built drawings to, for our staff to review. We went through all of these items. We have adjusted as many of them as we can. We have, some of them were able to be approved relatively easily. Some of them, like the ones in front of you this evening, we could not approve at the staff level. So when I say we're working on finishing these items, I've, we have worked at the staff level for the amount of time that is possible. We looped in Tanya and everyone else who also needed to be, to review these items. And that is, like, that's frankly why the applicant is here this evening, because there were a number of items that were not completed per their approval. So they are back at the board to ask for approval of those items.
Good.
Okay.
I do just, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, but the, with the green roof, the only thing outstanding with the green roof is that it's not actually installed, yeah?
Correct.
Right, yeah. And the applicant has committed to do that. I think we even put a purchase order or something on the portal, too, but that will be done.
So Counsel, I think for the board's edification, the sign and the green roof, you've proposed addressing, have submitted drawings and details to address those two items. It sounds as if, at least, HPC has said, "Okay, these are acceptable." But you haven't moved forward with actually doing those items, because this proceeding has been open now for that period of time.
Correct. We have a pending matter before the board.
So the rest of the items that have not been addressed, can you articulate exactly what those are for the board? Are you able to do that?
So that was James's initial testimony, right? So that's, that's why we're here. For those two items, the green roof and the signage, we're not requesting relief for those. We're not requesting an amendment.
Understood.
We're complying with those. So the change letter that was submitted with the application and the plans that James presented before this board are the changes that we're seeking relief for.
So we went through the drawings, and we identified, and it's skylights and all of the internal changes, and we're not going to go through all of that again.
Correct.
I went back and reviewed the transcript in preparation for the hearing. And we had left off, and we were talking about the power coming to the front of the building and PSENG. That's where we left the last hearing. That was the conclusion of the testimony. We started to talk about the fire escape in the rear, but it sounded as though that was being left to another witness.
Correct.
So does that help the board? Is everybody clear on where we are? Okay.
The only other thing was, I believe, were the skylights? That they, I mean, the removal and the switching?
Right. Yeah, that was, I mean, from my point of view, it was testified to, right? That all of this stuff happened. Those are the items that staff wasn't going to just sign off on, and that's what the applicant is requesting is, can we go ahead and move these skylights that we've already moved? Can we do the electric the way we've already done it? Closets, and we moved this bedroom and that bedroom, and interior glass, and things of that nature in terms of internal layout. That's the testimony that we heard, and that's part of the ask. So I think the open item in terms of the ask has to do with this fire escape. Is, are there anything else that we haven't touched on?
Well, the only other question is based on that, I don't know to the extent that Ms. O'Neill was able to review the transcripts or the videos, a laddie-daddie. But, I mean, at any point, did you know that the project or was gone off track? I mean, was that communicated to you? Skylights, power?
Staff was, HPC, or me, in my role as Preservation Specialist, I was not contacted when there were changes made to the project prior to their execution. However, there are other people in my office. I can't speak for them. My knowledge is that they were also not contacted, but I was not. That is something that just happens sometimes with construction. We, of course, try to remind applicants that they do need to request deviations for their projects to staff in writing. It was not done in this case.
Even though, did the applicant know about the 16 conditions well in advance and was working?
I can't answer if the applicant knew about the conditions.
I can answer that. The applicant knows about the conditions. They're documented in the resolution. There is no question that the applicant was well aware of what was approved. And if the applicant was unaware of what was approved, what was approved was what was approved. Drawings are signed and sealed. Resolutions are granted. They have to be followed. If there's a deviation, there's a deviation, and unfortunately, that's how you wind up in a proceeding like this. So the applicant is aware.
So Commissioner Lipsky, the, just for your, so that in this case, condition 15 of the HPC conditions would have applied. Upon approval of a certificate from the HPC or approval granted by Planning Board, deviations from the granted approval must be approved by the HPC, except in cases of emergency affecting public health, safety, and welfare. All requests for deviations are to be submitted through written request of the architect to HPC staff. So to answer your question, that is the condition that would apply here.
Right, and so you being the director of that department have said on record tonight that, that at no time were you made aware of it in writing?
I was at, no, I was not contacted by the owner or applicant in this case. I do just want to clarify for the record that I'm not the director. I come to you guys all the time. I am, I am not. It's okay.
You seem so apropos for the role. I don't know. But, so, I mean, so, but in charge of HPC, right? Like the staff there?
No.
No?
No. I do have a boss that is not Tanya. It's okay. But I am, I am the one who, I'm the secretary for the HPC, the board, and I do manage a lot of the caseload in our office, so I was not contacted.
So this is a learning experience for me, and I don't mind confessing ignorance and the desire to learn. But that being said, so who would the applicant need to have contacted at HPC? You, Tanya?
Any, myself, Dan, any of us?
Dan, okay.
In reality, an applicant can reach out to any of the preservationists for something like this, and we'll help feed it to the correct place. I do, I, I think it's... I, I do, I, I think it's important for us to understand that the applicant did not necessarily follow the conditions of their approval. I, I do think that's clear, though, and I, right? I don't want to beat a dead horse here in that we, I, I under, the applicant did not follow the conditions of approval, that is why we are here this evening. I would like to think that they understood that, what needed to happen, but I can leave that if they want to provide testimony and their specific thought process on that, that I can't provide that for them.
No, the only reason I pursue this is because in reviewing the transcripts for the last two meetings and having sat through it and needed to hear that was, and I sent an email, you know, requesting, you know, comment from you, which has been excellent, is because throughout it was represented that the applicant was working closely with your agency, department, division, whatever name that it is, it still arose, right? So, and that's why you're saying is, is that this memo still stands with that one exception, and counsel made it clear that the applicant did know because it's part of the record, so. I'm very happy.
Good. Any other commissioners have any questions for me?
No.
Great.
All right, so, that case, I think where we left off was cross-examination of Mr. Cornell.
That is correct.
Sworn in?
Counsel, I have a question.
Absolutely, Commissioner?
I would like to know why they haven't followed directions accordingly? I mean, I don't think that's been explained, I think I'm getting confused on this.
Just turn your mic on.
Turn your mic on.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I want to know why they haven't followed directions? I mean, that's, that came up, I'd read everything and the way it was explained, watching and listening to the tapes, I'm just confused on exactly what happened as far as not following the directions. I understand that's why they're here tonight, but I'd like to have a reason why they did not follow. I know I keep repeating myself, but bottom line is I want to know what happened.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can make a bunch of excuses for, for my client, I think they're, you know, they're, they're just excuses, but there were three different contractors involved in this project. First one died, second one ended up in litigation. Hoboken was reviewing the, the, the permits during the construction process. It, it was, it, it was, it was confusing and things, changes were made in the field and there's no good reason why it happened, it shouldn't have happened, it, it just shouldn't have happened. So I don't want to come across as if I'm trying to provide an explanation or an excuse for something that, that shouldn't have happened and we know shouldn't have happened.
So Commissioner, to your question, there's no good answer.
I agree.
I think there's some explanation, but there's, there's really no good answer.
All right.
Yes. James Cornell, J.A.M.E.S.C.O.R.N.E.L.L.
Good evening, Mr. Cornell, is your license current?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Mr. Cornell, you were sworn previously, so.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, you're witness.
Can you turn on your mic, please?
It's right where the white tag is on the bomb.
Oh. Oh, I see. Okay, it's on, okay, lower it, can it, lower without dropping? Yeah, and I can't hold it because I got to take notes while, I'm sorry, yeah, thanks. Okay, thank you, and, Mr. Cornell, I'm Anne Stedholm, we've met very briefly before.
Yes.
Multiple times. I am, I know there's another architect who's going to be testifying. I'm not trying to ask you any gotcha questions. And I have two different sets of questions because of all this. I'm not trying to trip you up and have you give different answers to another question.
Sure.
So if you just answer the question, these are pretty much cut and dry questions. But if you have any problem, obviously, you know, your client's lawyer is here, and I think we can get through this quickly.
Okay.
So.
One second.
Sure.
My mic is still turned on.
Oh, it's still off?
No, it's on.
Counsel, it's on, you just got to stand a little closer.
I just have to stand closer to it like that, oh, now I'm getting the feedback, yes, it's definitely on. Okay, and that was preliminary, that wasn't questions for the record. Okay, I don't normally have to stand on tip toe, here we go. Okay, the building was originally a two-story warehouse.
Correct.
And the, and the scope of work of this application was a full gut renovation of that warehouse and the addition of two new floors on top of the existing structure, is that correct?
I, I believe so.
Okay, thanks. And a change of use from a warehouse to a four-unit multifamily was required, is that correct?
I'll let Stephen answer those kind of zoning questions.
Okay, so you did not do a zoning review?
We had a planner.
You had a planner?
Yes.
And the planner told you what either was permitted or that he'd go for variance for and?
The lawyers worked out the variances.
Did your plans, and I apologize, I mean, I just, I can't remember, do your plans show the zoning chart?
The ones that were submitted to the building department, yes.
Yes, and did you sign those plans?
Yes.
But you basically just, and again, I'm not trying to beat you up, I'm just trying to show where his testimony starts and stops because they've got other people. But, so I'm, I'm understanding right now, you didn't, you didn't generate that zoning chart? You just let, put it in your plans, somebody else generated it?
I did, I did. I, I worked on the zoning chart myself.
But, but you don't know?
It was reviewed by other people.
It was reviewed by other people and you don't know, and again, there's no harm in it, but you don't know as you stand here that a change of use from a warehouse to a four-unit multifamily was required?
I would speculate it was.
Okay.
This was 2016.
2016, and what, I'll do, Mr. Joseph, I can, you'll, I'm sure you'll have another witness, I can, I want to nail that down. I, I thought he would just say yes, of course, but if he, he can't?
Well, I don't want to.
Yeah.
Counsel, why don't you come up to the mic if you're going to make comments?
I think just the confusion there is that in Jersey City, unlike in some other towns, there's not a specific form of relief for a change in use.
For a change in use? I just want to make sure the architect knew what was going on with the building, basically, again, I'm not trying to trip you up or get you in trouble. And, and partly, but partly I'm asking because, let me put it this way, you knew this was going to be an application with variances, is that correct?
We did have some minor variances, yes, I had, we worked with a planner in the planning department.
Okay, and it sounds as if that's the person I should ask about the detail of the variances that were required in the original application.
It depends on what the detail is, but yes, I would, I would imagine that you would speak with the planner for the planning part of it.
Okay, and if I have, so this, this question, I just have again for the clarity of the record, a change of use from warehouse to a four-unit multifamily, my question, I wrote it, was required, correct? I understand you to be saying you don't necessarily know, but there are other people in the applicant's team who will know that.
Well, let's leave, yeah, I'll leave it like that.
Okay, okay, that's fine, and if, if we have any questions like this as we go along, just, just let me know.
Yes, the planning stuff and variances, I would leave up to the lawyers.
Okay, okay, thanks. In the initial designs that were presented to the historic commission and the planning board back in 2018, was a fire escape or other second means of egress shown on the drawings?
I do you mean the ones that were presented in front of the planning board?
Yes, the original ones that got approved.
Yes.
Was it, was a fire escape or a second means of egress shown?
Yes.
And can you describe what that was?
I did, during my testimony, I pointed out where the gutter ladders were on the plan, you pulled them out and you went down the ladders.
You pulled them out and you went down ladders? And can you, can you review just briefly why those were ultimately changed, not built as shown?
I do not know that information.
Okay. Were egress and flood issues ever brought up as a concern in meetings with the community, if such meetings happen? With the historic preservation commission or in the planning board meetings and hearing?
I don't recall, don't recall, sorry.
And I apologize, that's a double barrel question, egress, don't recall?
Egress, yes, we, we did talk about egress.
You did talk about, so not flood issues?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So you did talk about egress? When, do you recall, and you may not recall, it's a long time ago, when were you told that a second means of egress was required?
I think we were always going for a second means of egress, as far as I know.
For, for all of the units?
That's why we had a egress running down the back of the building. We had it extended from the building down the street.
It is, oh, when you say down to the street, what do you mean by down to the street?
Well, there is an egress that was run to one of the properties further to the west of our property, two away, that they had gotten approved from the Board of Ed, and then we had ours extended, that egress extended down to our property by the, from the Board of Ed.
And, and you said in the street, do, do you mean to the rear of the building? Do you mean street level, basically?
It runs from the back of all the properties out to the, the driveway access of the school, I believe.
Yes, and you're correct about that, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, so when you say the street, I just want to make sure for the record, you're talking about the accessway, alleyway, whatever we want to call it.
Whatever you want to call that, right.
That is, that is in the back.
Easement that we had right down to our property.
And when I say, street level, again, I don't mean to trip you up, it's possible that it's not topographically at the same level of the street, I don't know. And so, so do you know?
I don't know what you're, what are you asking?
Is it the same, is the, is the street level of Bright Street the same as the, the level of the ground of this easement access that we're talking about?
I believe it runs downhill, the property from the street level to the back.
Okay. And did you understand, and I understand you're an architect, when you, when you designed the egress, did you understand that the people using it, I just want to like draw out your testimony, I think you did, but I want it clear on the record, were going to have to pass behind the houses at, I believe it's 91, 93, essentially as they proceeded west as they were using the escape route? They were going to have to go by all those other houses you just mentioned and then turn and go out to Bright Street?
Yes, that was why we had the property cleared, there were trees and vegetation in there and fencing that we had removed and the easement that we got extended down.
Okay, and did you know that the people, what I've been calling in this hearing upstream, which is my clients, you're at 87, they're at 83, 85, would also have to use that same egress?
They couldn't, there was a fence and rubble and I didn't testify to any of it.
Counsel, you're going to have to come up, it sounds like you're making an objection. I've been waiting for it, counsel, so why don't we put it on the record?
James didn't offer any testimony about the easement, he wasn't involved in creation of the easement, the drafting of the easement, getting the easement from the from the Board of Ed. I, I'd like to limit the cross-examination to what James actually testified to, which were the architectural plans and the changes from what was previously approved.
And.
And I, I understand he'd like that, but the witness himself started offering, I think appropriately, and I think correctly, his understanding as the architect who designed that second means of egress that was never built, how it would be used, he needs to know that as an architect, it's appropriate for him to have offered that in his testimony, and I'm just exploring his knowledge in both directions, east and west, in that, in that easement, I think he's doing a good job. I think he can answer the question without hurting the application.
I think he's, he has testified that he designed egress from the building that gets to a, a legal egress area, a legal easement right, to the right of way.
Correct, that it runs, that it runs along an easement to the right of way, but here's, but here's where we're going.
But we're not going to have an architect interpret what and who has rights to that easement.
I'm not asking that, that's not what I'm asking.
His testimony was very clear to say, yes, I designed this secondary mean of egress out the rear to then your question was however we want to describe this area, an alleyway, however we want to describe it. He testified that he understood that he could design the secondary mean of egress into that area, that that area was cleared by his client, that was his testimony.
I would like.
Who has the rights to that?
I didn't ask him that, I'd like the rec, my question read back, and it's a little while ago by now, where he said
Well, do you want your question?
Sure, my question, his answer? I don't think you've, I, Sandra, you're working from memory as am I. I don't believe you've accurately characterized what I asked, but we have a record right here, we can find out.
We can, but the objection is what it is, so Mike, are you able to read back the question and the answer just prior to the objection? Is that how far back you want to go, counsel?
Probably coupled before that, because as you noted, it took
Fair.
It took Stephen a little while to. It, it's, and Mike, it's my, it's my recollection that, that he brought it up and that's, so that's. Yeah, go back before that, because I think he was the first one to bring it up, but I may be wrong about that. He, if you go back to the first time he said street level, because that confused me genuinely, I, I thought maybe there was an extra exit to the front.
You would ask, when you say down the street, what do you mean down? Well, actually, let me go further back than that.
Okay.
You asked, you recall and you may not recall, it's long ago, when we told that a second means of egress was required? And the answer was, I think we were always going for a second means of egress, as far as I know. And you said for, for all the units, and the answer was, that's why we had a, an egress running down the back of the building. We had it extended from the building down the street. And then you asked, oh, when you say down to the street, what do you mean down to the street? And the answer was, well, there's an egress that was run to one of the properties further to the west of our property, two away, that they had gotten approved from the Board of Ed, and then we had ours extended, that egress extended down to our property by the, from the Board of Ed. Then you asked, and you said in the street, do you mean to the rear of the building? Do you mean street level, basically? I just, the street's in front. Answer, it runs in back of all the properties out to the, the driveway access to the school, I believe. Question, yes, and you're correct about that, I just wanted to make sure I was clear. So when you said the street, I just want to make sure for the record, you're talking about the, the accessway, the alleyway, whatever you want to call it. Answer, whatever you want to call that, right. Question, that is in the back? Answer, the easement that we had that ran to our property. Question, when I say street level, again, I don't mean to trip you up, if possible, it's not topographically the same level of the street, I don't know. Answer. Question, so do you know? Answer, I don't know what you're, what are you asking? I'm sorry. Question, is it the same, is the street level of Bright Street the same as the, the level of the ground of this easement access that we're talking about? Answer, I believe it runs downhill, the property from the street level in the back. Question, okay, did you understand, and I understand you're an architect, when you, when you designed this egress, did you understand that people using it? I just want to like draw out your testimony, I think you did, but I want it clear on the record. Were going to have to pass behind the houses at, I believe it's 91, 93, essentially as they proceeded west as they were using the escape route? They were going to have to go by all those other houses you just mentioned and then turn and go out to Bright Street? Answer, yes, that was why we had the property cleared. There were trees and vegetation in there and fencing that we had removed and the easement that we got extended down. Question, and did you know that the people, what I've been calling in this hearing upstream, which is my clients, you're at 87, they're at 83, 85, would also have to use that same egress? Answer, no, and then we got the objection.
Okay, okay, yeah, and I'm fine, if, if his answer is no, he didn't know that? He didn't know that they were going to have to use it?
That question is what I was objecting to.
Right.
So.
That you're, you're saying, you're, you're saying it's irrelevant or that he didn't have, that he?
It's not an appropriate question.
Who else was going to be there?
For, it's not an appropriate question for, for James to answer.
Well, it has to do with how he designs the egress. I think it's, I, you know, it has to do with how, my follow-up is going to be, did you design the egress to impede anybody from upstream? And I presume he'll say no, but I'd like to be able to ask him that question.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would.
You object, I won't, that I won't ask him that question? Okay, I'll move along. Okay. So, the current existing fire escape stairway, when was that added to the building?
I don't know.
Okay. You may not know this, which unit does the current existing fire escape serve or units?
I, I don't know, I wasn't prepared to answer.
Okay. Do you know if the newly added fourth floor? Do you know if the newly added fourth floor has two means of egress?
Yes, it does.
It does. Can you describe those two means of egress?
It goes down to the roof below into the back. The first one goes right out from the second floor to the street.
Mr. Cornell, you gotta do better than that.
Yeah.
I mean-
I'm sorry, I mean, it's, without a drawing, it's-
Do you have a drawing, Mr. Cornell?
Drawing, James, would that help you?
Yes, I guess we would have to do, pull up the as-built.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Joseph?
Yes, counsel? Thank you.
Do we have an as-built drawing?
Yes.
Is that what we're gonna be shown?
Yep.
Because I, I know Mr. Lewis is here, and I'm, I'm just not clear on what Mr. Lewis is going to be testifying to, so-
So, so-
I'm gonna ask for a proffer, I guess. I mean, can we?
Sure. So, so the drawing that we're showing that was presented last time is the, is the side-by-side, the, the approved versus the as-built. That's what James testified to last time. He'll use this to answer the questions now. Mr. Lewis was brought in as an independent architect to evaluate what was approved versus the as-built. He did a site visit at the property.
I'm sorry, this screen is flashing on me. Mr. Lewis was brought in to do an as-built of the building?
He, he didn't create a, a drawing. He was brought in to evaluate James's, James's drawings.
To confirm?
To confirm the testimony that, that James had given, and-
Okay. So, he took the drawing, James's drawing?
He, he reviewed, he reviewed the drawings, he reviewed the approved drawings, and he did a site visit at the property.
Okay.
And he reviewed the transcripts from the prior hearings.
Now-
Can I ask one question on that?
In-
Sure. So, for what purpose was that done?
That was done, um, that was done because the board had, had a lot of questions. There were obviously a lot of things that went wrong during the process of the construction. James was the architect of, of record at the time throughout all of that. So, we felt it would be beneficial to have a, an architect that wasn't involved in the process, that had, wasn't involved in the entire process, to evaluate where we are and how we got here.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, nobody, as I recall, as I read, was questioning what Mr. Cornell had put out. So, I mean-
There were, there were, I believe there were some questions that were raised by the, by the chairman that I don't know were fully answered in James's testimony. Mr. Lewis was intended to be our, our last witness this evening, so-
So, I think counsel's question is perfectly appropriate. I think that I just wanted to know what Mr. Lewis maybe was going to testify to, and if this witness couldn't address some of the questions, perhaps that's what Mr. Lewis was gonna do. But I just want to make sure that we're looking at an as-built, as prepared by this witness, as testified to this witness, that yes, I mean, let's, let's all be clear. There was a deviation. So, I don't fault the witness for saying, "Look, I drew this. Something else was built, and it wasn't what I drew." If that's what happened, however it happened, that's what happened. What's there now? And is that what we're looking at on the drawing? Because that's counsel's concern, right? Is this, is this what's there? Yes, this is what's there. Okay, next question. Show me the ingress, show me the egress.
That's fair. Yep, absolutely, I agree with that. There's, there is also George Weiner here, who, who is the architect who designed the, um, the fire escape specifically, which James had mentioned at the, the beginning of, of his direct testimony.
Right, but presumably, however that came to be, to counsel's point, the drawing should identify-
Correct.
Whether, however that happened, that testimony will come. But counsel wants to know right now, okay, show me the ingress and egress life safety issue.
I don't disagree with that, yeah.
So, let's see.
Yep.
Let's go, there's only four units, so let's start at the top.
Right, start at the top.
And you can point them out, so we can all follow along.
And it may make it easier for you, Mr. Cornell, if you say, "Well, I'm looking at something, but obviously, I want it designed." You know, that's hard. If you say, "Well, I'm expecting to see this over here, because that's where I put it, but, oh my God, looking at this, now it looks like it's over there." I, I got no problem if you explain that. Again, we're not trying to trick you up just to get information as, as, as the board's counsel.
Got it. So, um-
And I did ask about the fourth floor first. So, I guess we'll start there and then go down.
This is the fourth floor. The drawing on the bottom is the fourth floor as-built, and the drawing on the top, I believe, uh-
Can you zoom in?
Nope, not my computer, so, give me a second here. Not, not touchscreen? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thanks.
That's all right. That's good.
So, on the, on the top floor, um, all the windows in the back are egress windows that they could drop down onto, where the rear of the building, which is to the right of the drawing, is a huge deck that's two stories up.
Oh, and I have a question that, so the roof of the deck, we're looking at a fourth-story apartment, but the roof of the deck is not immediately below those windows, it's two stories down? Is that correct?
Hmm, it depends, no, it's not.
No, okay, I apologize.
It would be one story down.
It's one story down.
Two stories down from the roof.
From the roof. Well, is the building four stories in the back?
It is two stories, and then it steps in, in, as you can see in this elevation. And then it's two stories again, back down to the bottom.
Right, so, the terrace roof, is that, is that sort of large area? You have the cursor, I don't, but, but the large area on top of the bricks there to-
Yes, that is, um, a deck in the back.
Right, so, it's, is it three stories above the ground from there?
No.
It looks like it's three stories above the ground. One, two, three.
There's, there's a, that floor where the arrow is, is the mezzanine area.
Okay.
And you see that little, where the ladder is in the rear? The roof deck loads onto that ladder and comes down to that little tiny platform area there, which you would see in the plan before. And then it goes into the fire escape and then down to the back.
So, I just want to make sure, this is a four-story building now, correct?
Yes.
And the, I'm gonna call it the white space? It, it has a label, but I can't read it, it has a sort of a diagram, that, exactly, that white space. Is that one story or two stories?
That is two stories.
Okay, so, we're talking about the fourth story. We're talking about going out those windows. And I said it's a two-story drop down to-
Nope, nope.
It's not. How is it not?
Because you're, you're on the floor, you're not at the roof. The roof is two stories up.
Oh, so you're hanging out the window, you're just dropping down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're going from the fourth floor to the roof of the second floor?
Which is the floor to the third floor.
Which is the floor of the, of third floor, exactly. So, you're going from basically the floor of the fourth floor down to the floor level of the third floor.
Or, as in many buildings, you go out the main entrance egress, or you go up to the roof at the bulkhead.
Well, well, wait a second, though. I'm, I'm still, I'm still caught up on the fourth-
Counsel, what is the question? The second means of egress out of the fourth floor?
Out of the fourth floor, and I am confused. I can't tell whether that white area is two stories or one story. Is that a, to, that is a two-story area, right? That white area?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so if you're getting out the fourth floor, you have to get down somehow to the floor level, as, as Mr. Sandra said, of the third floor. You have to get down to that.
Yep.
And how would you do that?
If you needed to get out the windows, you would go out the egress windows, like in any normal house.
And is there, and you'd have to drop down to that?
If you were going out the windows, correct.
Is that the second mean of egress out of the fourth floor?
Well, there's actually three for that unit.
Okay.
Um, you can go up to the roof, like I, I had mentioned-
Right, okay.
To the bulkhead door, and then go down the ladder that goes down the side.
So, there's a ladder from, so if you go up to the roof to the bulkhead door, there's a, there's a ladder that's not shown on this slide, then?
You know, is there a ladder anymore? I didn't change the, uh-
So, Mr. Cornell, we understand that this is an as-built and not your design. And if you don't know where that-
Yes.
Second mean of egress out of the fourth floor is-
You're going out, you're going out the windows, the egress windows that are there.
And dropping 10 feet down to that?
Yes, or you're going up to the roof, um-
And hoping?
At the egress, um-
Right, it's gotten you out of the building, but now I'm on the roof.
Right.
And there's no way to have the roof there?
No.
No, and-
It doesn't appear to be, no.
And there doesn't appear to be the as-built, which obviously isn't yours, and you don't remember-
No, I, I drew the as-built.
Oh, you drew the as-built? Oh, okay.
The as-built is his, the design is not, right?
Ah, okay.
It deviates from what he had designed.
I apologize, I didn't understand that. So, you did do the as-built, so you did both these drawings?
Yes.
Your drawing, and then you measured the as-built, and you drew that. So, it, are we correct that if you go up to the roof, there's no way to get off the roof?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Which is typical of many buildings, even the one next door.
Is it typical of new buildings?
I, I couldn't answer that question.
Do you know if it complies with code for new buildings?
It was reviewed by two different municipalities and approved.
Do you personally know whether it applies with code?
I would have to review the code myself right now.
Is part of your licensure require you to know the fire safety code where you build?
Not off the top of my head.
It's not, you're not required to know it?
No, yeah.
You would have to look it up?
I would have to research it, because it changes all the time.
Okay, so, to your knowledge at the moment, you do not know whether a new building that traps someone on the fourth floor with no way to get off-
It is not trapping anybody on the fourth floor. It is code. It was approved by two different municipalities.
Well, we'll put it this way, that's two different things.
Counsel, just one second.
It may have been approved, but that doesn't mean it's too code.
Let's ask a question, let's get the answer.
Okay.
Let's not talk over each other only because Mike is working very hard-
Yes.
And he's trying to get this verbatim. Good question, right?
Oops.
Sounds like you have to review the code in order to answer the question. If I understand your testimony, you went out there, you looked at what was there, and you drew it.
Correct, yep.
Okay, that's what your charge was, that's what you did.
So, so I have, I do have a question now, and I apologize, this wasn't prepared. This is based on, on your testimony. The fourth, I, I started with the top floor, and I asked it, the two means of egress. And you said, "Yes, one is, you know, hang and drop, which we know, um, and the other is go up to the roof." Is there another egress to that apartment? The fourth floor?
That's two different questions.
I'm not understanding.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Other than hang or drop, or go to the roof, is there any other egress from the fourth floor?
Yes, you go out the main entrance.
Okay, thank you. I presume that was correct, but I just needed to know. So, is the-
It's a fully sprinkled building as well.
Okay, that's fine. That's very nice.
Two-hour fire rating on all the floors.
But you still need to be able to get out.
I understand.
Okay. So, the fourth and third floors, are they different units? Or are they one duplex unit?
It's one, wait, the third and fourth floor, the top two floors, the addition is one unit.
One unit, okay. If you're in the third floor portion of the third and fourth floor unit, what are the egresses?
You go down the main entrance, out to the second floor, and down, out to the front, where you go into the back deck area, and you go down the fire escape.
Okay. And how did you design it originally, if you remember?
It still had a fire escape in the back, and you went out to the back the same way, more or less.
Well, more or less, can you-
Different type of fire escape.
Different type of fire escape. It was a ladder, right?
Yes, we were trying to minimize the look of a fire escape with historic, and we came, there was a system that looked like a gutter that extended out of the gutter.
Okay. And so, for the-
I mean, a leader, not a gutter.
The, the, yeah. I don't, I'm not an architect, I don't know the two. Gutter's horizontal, and leader goes, goes vertical. So, for the fourth, for the first floor, it's pretty easy, right? How do you get out on the first floor?
Yep.
You, how, how do you get out on the first floor?
You go to the front or the back, yep.
Or the back. Can you show us where that back door is at the moment, on the first floor?
Okay, so, um, it's where the door swing is in the right side of the drawing.
Okay, I'm seeing at the bottom of the drawing where the cursor's moving-
Yep.
There's like a quarter circle, basically, showing the door swing-
Correct.
That way.
Correct.
Do those windows there, by any chance, I believe those are, are also windows in that wall? Do they slide open in any way?
I do, I couldn't answer that question.
Okay, okay.
No, they wouldn't slide, but-
They wouldn't, but you don't know if they open.
Originally, they were open, operable.
So, when that door, if I'm reading this correctly, I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, I'm looking at, I call it the, the quarter circle, right? If the door is open, then if it stays open, can you tell me how someone who is coming from the east, that reaches towards the top of the picture and coming down, they can't get through where those stairs are? They can't get through where that open door is?
Yes, they can.
They can get through where their, where that open door is how?
Well, the door opens more than 90 degrees, but also, um, there's plenty of room between the stair and the door swing to get by it. And also, there's a video of somebody walking through the fire escape area. It's more than, than applicable for somebody to walk by.
Was that video taken in preparation for this hearing?
I haven't seen that video.
I don't know if it was ever entered or not.
I've never heard of it before now. I'd be happy to see it.
Okay. Maybe it's a picture?
So, it's your testimony, despite the fact that the door swing is shown as a quarter circle, it actually swings, does it swing 180 degrees?
Um, yeah, well, listen, I, I'd have to go and check the door myself, but there's six feet between, more or less-
Well, well, a lot less.
Between the door and the wall.
Well, no, because between the door and the wall, but you have to get by. So, we see those stairs with a little arrow on them, right? Does everybody understand what a staircase is showing here?
Yeah, so for scale, the door is three feet, so you can see that there's plenty of room.
Right, so if you've come along from the, the top, and you come down close to the building, because you have to avoid the stair, and then there's the swung open door in front of you. So, what you're saying is then, by then, the stair has stopped, so by then, you, 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 if I, if I'm correct, you then move along to where the stair is, because there's, there's a wall on the other side of that stair, right? You can't go past that, right?
I believe so.
Okay, I would love it if it were possible, and I don't know if it's possible. I know that people can mark up things with their computers. We see it all the time. I don't know how to do it. I don't know if it's possible for you to draw in that little curving S-shaped path you've just described? If you can, I'd love it if you would. If not-
Mr. Cornell, is it your testimony that a person could bypass?
Absolutely, I've done it myself.
That door coming out of the staircase, that's your testimony?
Yes, I've done it myself.
Okay, counsel, I am sure you have somebody that would be able to counter that point when we get to your witnesses.
I do, yes.
Understood.
Okay.
Commissioner, do you have a question?
Yes, I do, Mr. Cornell.
Yes.
Mr. Cornell, this door is open, opening away from the stairs coming down, correct?
It was at the time, um, that...
The way I see it designed right now, and I'm not trying to lead you or anything like that, it seems like to me, looking at this drawing, it's wa, it's opening away from the stairs.
Right.
So in essence, a person can come out, out of that door without any problem and also go down the stairs, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Right, and I'm talking about, I mean, not that I don't have concern for the people in that building, but I'm talking about the people further along the alley.
Is there a question for James, though?
Well, but I could, because, because the, the, the board member, I thought, made a good point, which is talking about people coming out of the house, they come out the door and/or down the stairs, and there they go. But my question, and my witness will talk about.
All right, so then, that's not a question for Mr. Cornell, right? Mr. Cornell's testimony is that with that door open, a person can come down the staircase and pass the door? Mr. Cornell, if anybody else was able to get past that staircase, would the door impede their flow?
No, no.
So as long as they are heading, I believe it's west if you're going down the page, correct?
Right.
That door open, in a 90-degree angle?
You could still go right by it.
Your testimony is you can pass that door?
Correct.
That's your testimony?
That's your testimony, thank you, sir.
Um, so, there's no property survey or indication of the property lines in the as-built drawings? Can you explain where the property lines are located in relation to the new construction? And by that, I mean that, that wall with the windows in it? Where is it in relation to the property lines compared with where it was originally?
Counsel, I don't understand your question.
There was originally a wall there, they rebuilt it, and they moved it.
The rear wall of the building?
The rear wall of the building, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I'm asking if he knows?
How much further to the property line, or closer to the property line?
Um, I imagine it, it is pretty much right where the original wall was, we had to put in screw pilings. It's a pretty heavy-duty, uh, steel structure back there. Um, that, uh, four-square frame to brace the building from going side to side. Uh, we had to put a bunch of screw pilings down there and a very large footing. Uh, that then supports all the steel going up to help, uh, take some lateral load of the building, and the floor's going up.
And when you say me, do you mean that you were?
Counsel, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, when you say, when you say?
I'm not the contractor.
Not the contractor, so when you say me, were you present during that actual construction you just described?
I had visited the site a few times, yes.
So were you the supervising architect while at least some portion of this construction was going on?
Um, I would say, I, I don't know what you mean by supervising architect, I wasn't supervising anybody.
James, you were the architect of record.
I was the architect of record, yes.
Okay, um, but I think you've testified that until you did the as-built drawings, you didn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, you didn't have personal knowledge of the deviations between what was built versus what was approved?
I had visited the site a few times over six or seven years, and different contractors, and had discussions with people.
Okay, do, do you understand that, that, that I believe part of the application right now is for a variance, the difference between the proximity to that rear lot line, what was approved versus what was built? And you may not know that, and that's okay.
I don't believe there's a, a variance.
James, is there a change in the rear wall of the building from the original? Sorry, I apologize, I apologize. Is it your testimony that there's, there's no, there's, the rear wall of the building is not a change that we are requesting this evening from the original approval beyond the exterior, uh, material modifications and the fire escape that you previously testified to?
Correct, we, we're not changing anything to the rear wall, the way it was proposed. Besides what we had listed in our, um...
So the location of the rear wall in relation to the property line is the same as was originally proposed?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
Before you continue, uh, counsel, I just have a quick question, as counsel brought it up. When you did your site visit occasionally, and you looked back at your plans, did it, an alarm went off that what is on your plans is not what's being built currently?
No, no, I would say no, because typically, in, in many construction projects, the floor plans change slightly depending on owner preferences during the construction. Happens all the time.
Do, do you know whether those are field changes?
They weren't major, they weren't major changes.
They were not major changes?
At, at typical changes.
But as you, as it's being built and you're seeing the as-built, did that sound? Did you, did you inform anyone?
Well, they, they already, the owner already knew, uh, what changes he made, and we were just documenting what was there for...
So then, it continued on that path, as building, as here, the contractor move away from that plan?
I know, the as-built drawings are done after, after it's built. It's as somebody had built it, so it's at the end of the project.
As I understand what the commissioner is asking is, I understood her to say, were you noticing changes between your proposed and approved drawings and what was getting built? This is long before you did the as-bills. And my understanding of what you responded was, well, there's often changes, I mean, yes, but I didn't think any, you know, the owner knew. Um, are those, would those, would I be correct to say you're speaking of what are called field changes?
I, I don't think that's what I said.
Okay, then, then Mike, okay, uh, Mike, would you, would you mind?
But the changes were field changes, yes, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, they were field changes. To your knowledge, do field changes need to be signed off on, not by this board, but by building department personnel?
The building department reviewed it during inspection, and I, I believe they, I mean, I can't speak for the building department.
Okay, fair enough. Um, this is, this is a couple of questions from my clients, and I apologize, I'm not positive, I fully understand that, but I think...
So counsel, why don't you read them silently and see if you can make them into?
Do something that I can, that I can?
Appropriate questions.
Okay, I will.
Okay.
The as-built drawings do not have any dimensions. Did you take actual measurements of what was built?
I don't recall, I imagine that, um, I must have jotted things down when I was in the field. They weren't changes that, they were interior changes, so they're not, you know...
I don't know.
They weren't a big deal, no.
Okay, they weren't a big deal. Um, there were no existing conditions, is it correct that there were no existing conditions drawings provided now or approved in 2018 of the building prior to construction?
Counsel, I don't understand the question. Existing conditions?
Existing conditions drawings, oftentimes in application we'll say, this is what we've got, especially if it's a historic building. This is, we've, we've dimensioned the current building, and this is how we're going to change it. And there does not seem to have been that step done, and I was just going to say that, but it's a question for him.
Did you see?
Um, we must have...
Architecturals of the then-existing building?
See, the existing building had an approval from the planning board previously. Um, so a lot of the initial ideas were based off of what was already approved.
But I think the question is, there was a building on this property?
Yes.
Did you see any architectural plans from what was on the property prior to any change to?
No, there were no, there were no ones created beyond what the previous owner had created.
Which were?
Art.
Development plans for a, a project?
For a project, yes.
Not, here's an existing as-built of the existing, I guess warehouse building would be?
No, you know, it was a, a large open space with two, two floors of open space, so, uh, there was a little tiny room um, that was used as an office, but, uh, as far as I recall, but most of the building was empty.
But there's no record then of exactly where the existing walls were in relationship to each other?
I don't believe there, I, you know?
Okay, I think he's, I think he's answered.
Counsel, I might please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I said, I said, I, I think what James testified to is that he, he doesn't, he doesn't know and he didn't prepare anything.
I, 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 I think he's answered the question. Um, I don't know if we have the cellar floor plan available here, can you explain what in your cellar floor plan previously existed and what was created as part of the new construction?
There was an existing cellar there in that area, uh, where the stairs go down, which is on the left, the top corner, where you see the little circle is some pump that was put in.
So what is that gray rectangle?
That is where the garage floor is.
I'm sorry, I, I apologize.
That is the garage floor.
That's the garage?
Correct.
Did you say the garage door?
Floor.
Floor, I'm sorry, can you show us where the garage door is?
It's in the front of the building at the, yes, there you go.
Ah, so they, do they come in, the garage comes in on the, on the ground floor?
Exactly where it used to.
Okay, and so that gray area is, is it just not excavated?
Correct.
Ah, it's not excavated?
No.
So that wall at the very bottom of that drawing that's next to the non-excavated area, is there a reason it's shown as a wall? Is there actually a wall buried in there?
Uh, I'm not clear.
Okay, so my understanding is that the gray area is, is solid, it's not excavated, there's nothing underneath the first floor garage there?
Um, correct, there are screw pilings that we had to put in during construction.
And, but it is showing a wall, it's showing a foundation at that level?
Yes.
Okay, and, and that is existing there?
Yes.
Okay, so, and how do you know that? I just, I'm just curious, because it's filled in, I'm just curious. Did you excavate down to see that it was there?
No, there's a cellar on the other side of it, it goes down.
Wait, I, for some reason, you said there's a cellar?
Yes, there was, there was an existing cellar, you could see it right on the other side where they had electrical and plumbing and water.
I can't, and I apologize, please explain to me, I'm getting very confused about this, I'm sorry, James, I didn't mean to.
Mike, you want to take a break now?
Let's finish the witness.
Where the arrow, where the arrow is located right now is an existing cellar that was there.
That was there?
Yes.
Okay, so underneath it is the gray area that is solid, that was never excavated, right?
Correct.
And below that, just move the cursor down, there's the exterior wall of the building. Does, maybe it doesn't indicate, it looks to me like this indicates a full foundation all the way down.
Yep.
And so if that gray area is all full of dirt, how do you know that that wall is there?
We did test pits.
Okay, and that's fun. My father's an archaeologist, so that's why I was curious. So you did do test pits, can you show us roughly where the test pits were with the cursor?
Uh, no, I could not, um, they were randomly throughout, uh, we did several on each side to, to determine the basement, um, the depth of the footing, um, and it went down far below what we, uh, we were doing, yes.
And, no, that's very interesting, and it went down, it went down, it went down below what, I guess you, you'd expected, but?
I think it probably at one time it was all excavated out.
Was excavated out?
That, that would be my, um, my impression.
Okay, very interesting. Um, so then, is there anywhere excavated out now that was solid when you started working on the building? And in the past, it might have been, there might have been full cellar, they might have filled it with dirt, we don't know. But did, 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 did your drawings increase that square footage of the below-ground area that we're looking at now?
Uh, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know.
Uh, Mr. Lumpy, just, uh, for reference, I think, what I think everybody's trying to get at is the board-approved plans didn't reference a cellar, but the as-bills and the show reference a cellar, so they're, um...
Now, the, the cellar, the cellar was al- already always there.
Even in the rear?
In the rear, you know, um... You know, I'm trying to think back of what the original building was like there.
If you don't know, just say it.
I'm going to say, I don't know, but I know for sure there was a cellar there, uh, at that elevation, because there was water.
You don't know the size of the cellar?
Um, it went beyond what it, what is caged over there.
I'm sorry, what is caged?
Uh, that, which, not caged, but you know, what?
No, I don't know.
That front area, in the top corner, the cellar was beyond that.
So you just moved the cursor, you're, you're, you're right now, you're pointing the cursor, well, you're moving it again. So when you say this cellar was beyond that, can you show me what you mean by this and that?
Um, I'm not going to be able to tell you exactly where the original cellar went, but the rest, um...
Let's make this very simple.
Yes, I'm, I'm...
The cellar was expanded from what was there, is that accurate or inaccurate?
It is probably slightly expanded, um, I think there was, there was a wood floor on that level, and there was, you could barely walk underneath of it, from what I recall. I don't know how much, you know, the lot was taken to put in the screw pilings and stuff, so...
And is it your testimony that what was approved at the top dated or identified on the drawing as H-18-216, approved 093020? Is the same footprint as the as-built below it? Because again, to counsel's point, there's no dimensions.
I'm, I'm sure for that, 100%, yeah. I didn't change the, they didn't change the...
So for, for, for example, because, because counsel's exactly, this is, I am less skillfully trying to get to the same thing. Um, the quite square portion towards our right of the drawings that shows a little reoriented staircase coming down into it? My understanding is that that's essentially the living area, if you will, of the ground floor unit?
Yes.
And that is below the grade of some other rooms in that unit?
Yes.
So the ground floor unit is to a degree a duplex?
Uh, that back area is, there's a mezzanine area in that.
Um, and was that shown as excavated, and this is going to be a two, two-point question, was that shown as excavated on the proposed plans that were approved?
It was always shown on the proposed approved plans.
Okay, and did it change in any way other than the orientation of the stairs between the approval and the as-built?
I'm going to say no, but, uh, that's, that's my recollection.
Okay.
Mr. Cornwell, is your testimony from your recollection?
Um...
Your testimony with respect to what was approved versus what was constructed is, it doesn't appear, and you're not showing us, the original plan?
Right.
Are you going from your memory?
No, that, the top drawing is the approved drawing, and the bottom drawing is, um, when I went back and I made corrections to what was approved.
Um, do you recall whether the approved drawing showed the actual floor level of that entire lower level of the building, or of any part of it?
Uh, yes, I do, because we have sections, we had sections that we had to submit at the time.
Okay, do you have any of those sections available now, for us to see?
Uh, I only have available what we submitted.
It's on the, it's on the portal. The, the approved, at least the original, but I, I know it's going to be a pain in the butt to upload, so I don't, I'm just saying.
There's, there's, put it this way, I've noticed discrepancies, but I don't want to testify about them, I was hoping I could get it from Mr. Cornell.
Okay, uh, I'm going to say that...
Counsel, how much longer do you have for Mr. Cornwell?
I didn't think this was going to take this long, and, you know, frankly...
Well, if you weren't trying to trip me up into something.
Let's say, it seems to be there's a, there's a, I don't know here, we'll see if we can, if we can straighten that out.
If you're straightforward with your questions, I can answer.
Loathly as I am to testify, that's why, Mr. Lumpy was laughing.
But how much longer?
Look, I think just like three minutes. Um, so, um, the as-built drawings do not indicate where the new services are located. Can you explain where the new electrical service, sprinkler, fire pump, and other utilities are located?
Yes, they're all in the cellar, which is that top right-hand, uh, left-hand corner where the stairs are coming down.
And were in the, in the upper drawing, which is, I understand, as proposed, were they all showed in their current locations that they're shown now in the plans as proposed that were approved?
Yes, the, the approved drawings had, um, all of the mechanicals, uh, displayed within the drawings, and not something that was going to put in the as-built drawing.
Um, can you, there is a small, I will use the technical term doohickey, at the, in the new as-built, along the bottom wall, yep, you're coming down towards it, that thing that looks like a gas pump or something, can you, can you tell me what that is?
Well, that was put in because that specifically was a change from what was approved, that is the, uh, forced hair um, mechanical unit, and that's hung from the ceiling in that location.
Hung from the ceiling, are the others on the floor?
The other ones are in the apartments.
They're in the, they're in the apartments, but they're on the floor of the apartments?
In each individual apartment.
Okay, so like, we're...
In a mechanical closet.
Right, we're looking at the, at the, I don't know, with basement ground floor, lowest level of the building, and I'm seeing some things within circles that look like pumps and equipment?
The things that look like a circle and have a dot in the middle are some pumps.
Okay, and can you show us where the electrical equipment is?
It's in the cellar, along that upper, um, yep, right, pretty much where the arrow is.
Okay, but it's not shown on the plan?
That's where the original, um, meters were, and that's where our new ones are.
And do you have mechanicals for the sprinkler system? Can you tell us where those are?
They're in that location on the opposite wall.
And they're on the wall?
Yes.
Is that that thick black line there?
No, that is something that was added, different from the approval, that's why this in the drawing, um... That's why this in the drawing, um, it's a electric baseboard heat that they put down there.
Oh, and is any of this within two feet of the floor?
I don't recall the location exactly of the electrical heat.
Okay, we'll, we'll find that out. Um, here we go. Did you know that the property is in a flood zone?
Um, I believe so.
And are you aware that there are regulations that govern what could be built in a flood zone?
Mm-hmm.
Was, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm done with him. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, uh, question, just real quick. So under the conditions that were submitted to, or put on the portal, February 19, 2025, it said that, um, at the time, um. So the last sentence in the first paragraph says, "Said recommendations are attached and include conditions requiring the applicant to request and be approved for deviations from the approved plan set prior to work being undertaken." And then specifically of the 16, number 14 says, any, and quote, "Any changes or deviations, any changes or deviations from the approved drawings are to be clearly bubbled on the construction drawings and noted and then accompanied signed and sealed letter from the architect addressed to staff."
Mm-hmm.
So earlier, I think, and I'm not going to ask Michael to read back, but I think I heard you say that there were some changes while this was going on. Were they ever, uh, submitted to HPC or to planning staff?
Uh, I don't believe so, but I was not retained during construction.
Fair, well, the only thing, then maybe you can clarify this, is because it says under item 11, "The architect, James Cornell U,"
Mm-hmm.
"It says shall be retained during construction and shall submit a signed and sealed letter representing and noting the site's construction was consistent with work approved under the final certificate of appropriateness, which never, it didn't get approved or denied, it just floated in media's rest, right? Okay. Or planning board approval before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy."
Yes.
So at what point did, I mean, so if 11 says that you were retained during construction?
Um, the project went on for several years, so it was a very difficult situation. And, um, I did submit the changes to HPC, uh, in a letter form and with the ASBilt drawings bubbled.
Uh, when was that? Because this letter saying, and Maggie O'Neil testified earlier.
At the request of the CO.
When was that?
At the point we requested a CO.
Before February 19, 2025?
I couldn't tell you that date.
That's this year.
Uh, well, I think we requested a CO a year or more ago, right? I mean, I don't have the dates in front of me.
I, uh, I don't recall when the CO was issued, the exact date, but I, I think that condition was somewhat complied with because a CO wasn't issued. We didn't get, we didn't get a permanent CO on the building because, because James submitted the, there were things that didn't match, right?
But obviously, when we are applying for a CO, construction is complete.
Correct.
So, in theory, everything has already been finished and now we're submitting and we shouldn't be submitting plans with changes at CO-ing, right? That should happen prior.
Absolutely.
But it sounds like it didn't happen until we were applying for a CO. The applicant was applying for a CO.
That's correct.
So I have a follow-up question to Commissioner, um, Lewiski. And maybe I didn't hear this. You, Mr. Cornell, you said you were not retained during construction?
You know, it was, um, I, I can't, it, it's hard to believe. Um, but the project started in 2016 and it went through lots of issues, different contractors. It's just no way to be fully involved in a project for that long.
So then my question to Mr. Joseph is, who was the architect on file during the absence of?
I was on file.
You were still on file?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
But you were not retained?
I, you know, I wasn't, it wasn't, I can, couldn't go to the site every day for seven years or whatever day it was, was, you know? It's just that, not practical.
So your name was on file, but you were not physically visiting the site, if, if that is correct?
I, I had visited the site, um, on several occasions, but, um, but I don't know what, what else to say.
Can I ask one more? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The punch-out windows that were originally on the side elevations, they're, they weren't put in?
Right, no. All of those, most of those items in that list were part of what the then submitted approved drawings took care of.
Okay. Was that, was that because of the construction code? Just curious.
Uh, that's because we couldn't never get a, a full quorum with the HBO, um, and then it went to planning, uh, and then, uh, instead, uh, and there were some recommendations for things to be changed during that meeting, I believe. Uh, and that's when those items were listed out.
Okay, thanks.
So do you recall when you were, um, uh, retained for construction? Is there a specific date or time? Well, let me back that up, if you don't mind. My apologies. How, I mean, are you the owner of the property?
I am not the owner of the property.
Okay, fair enough, then that's good. So at what point were you retained?
Um, it was sort of an open thing where then, when there was an issue, um, I, I came to the site to try to help rectify it.
No, no, that's not my question.
I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't something like, it wasn't retained. That's all I could say.
If maybe I could just try to cut, cut through this, right? So James, you, you were, you were retained to work on the project. You were retained at one point.
Yes.
For, for HPC, for planning, for construction. And because the project drew on for so long, there were periods of time where maybe you were not fully retained for.
Right, because there's times where nothing happened, you know, for a year or so.
Yeah, maybe your, maybe your retainer ran out, maybe something to that effect is what you're trying to say, right?
Correct, yep.
But here we have a letter from Mr. O'Neil who spoke earlier. And it, in the memo on February 19th of this year, saying that, um, Mr. Cornell should be retained or shall be retained during construction and shall submit certain things. So, but, and then when you're, and then when you're both saying, it's like, I mean, it, it just, I mean, I'm, I, obviously, Michael can't read my hand, so, um, you know, but saying I'm retained, I'm not retained, I'm, I'm, some things are not happening, things are happening. I mean, either you're the commander in chief or you're not, right? You can't be half-pregnant, right? You either are or you're not.
Correct, yeah. I mean, James was the architect of record throughout the, the pendency of, of this, of this project.
Okay. Thanks, George.
We have to take a break.
All right.
I have a question. During this saga that you were going through,
Mm-hmm.
Any time did you ever have any correspondence going back to, to contractor or the owner of the property about the situation where you were retained, not retained?
No, no, um, I, I don't think I had any conversations about that, but I did have conversations with, um, at least the, the second contractor at various points, but, um, there were issues with that contractor.
All right.
And I apologize, I have two more very quick questions based on what he was just testifying to. Um, were you retained to design this building?
Yes.
And you had mentioned you were working off plans. Did you work off those other plans or was this your design?
It's my design.
Okay, thanks. That's, that's what I thought. Um, you know, the, the, the TCO was issued, my notes are May 24 and expired July 24. Do you, do you know whether or not that's true? Because I'm going to put in other rest, if you don't know.
Nope.
Do you know what the current status is?
Nope.
Do you know if the building's occupied?
Is there a year on those months?
Yeah, May 2024 and would have expired in July 2024.
Fair enough, thanks.
Um, but he said he doesn't know and I'm asking, and so he didn't know, and that's okay. I just, if he did, I would get it in through him. Um, do you, and do you know of the current status of CO or TCO?
Steve, do you want to speak to that?
Well, it's a question for you.
I don't know.
Okay, and do you know is the building occupied?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I just have one follow-up question in regards to the retain. You are retained by the project manager or you are retained by the owners?
By the owner.
By the owners. And when you went to for site visit and you see what was happening there, did you not inform the owners?
There wasn't anything typical, out of typical construction that was happening there. You know, there was.
So then how we ended up with an approved and then ASBilt?
Um, those are slight field changes that were made during construction. They're not big changes to the project. The bulk apartments did not change in size or scale and it's the same approved square footage. The same basic layout, the layouts are not very different. It was just a change, uh, based on a few items like mechanical unit, uh, mechanical system changes. There's no, uh, major changes to it.
And so you, you, you didn't find it necessary for, um, those changes to be informed planning?
You know, typically, changes happen all the time during construction to layouts and they're submitted as the ASBilt, ASBilt drawings. They weren't changing the square footage or intent of the project.
But especially this is somewhat part of a historic, um, part of it as well?
Well, nothing happened to the front of the building, which is what historic's involved with.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Mr. Cornell?
No, no.
Okay, so we'll take a 10-minute break.
Thank you.
All right.
Next witness.
All right, um, next witness, uh, we're going to bring George Weiner up to testify about the, uh, firescape. He is the architect who worked with the Hoboken Building Department in designing the firescape. Get you sworn in.
I do. George Weiner, W-E-I-N-E-R.
Mr. Weiner, have you qualified you before?
Uh, a number of years ago.
Okay, so your license is current?
Yes.
You got standing?
Can you just give us some of your background and how you related to the project for, for the record?
Um, I was brought in, uh, by the owner, uh, specifically to, uh, address the issue of, uh, a secondary means of egress, that is to say, a firescape, uh, from the rear of the building.
And that's in conjunction with your license as a licensed architect?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, I think that we can qualify the gentleman as an architect and his testimony is with respect to the firescape on this particular project as well as whatever history he has with firescapes. Is that a fair characterization of your participation in the project?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
It's fair.
Okay, you're qualified. You may proceed.
So George, help us out here. Tell us a little bit of the history about the firescape, about the interactions with the building department, about why this particular firescape was designed the way it was, how it got approved by, by Hoboken. Just, let's just start with a little brief history of how we got to where, where we are.
Mr. Weiner, were you brought in at the beginning of the project? When were you brought into the fold, if you will?
I'm the caboose on this job at the tail end. It was pretty much a fait accompli. Uh, we have done a number of firescape inspections and fires, firescape designs specifically over the years, both in Jersey City as well as in Hoboken and, and, uh, Weehawken and areas of that nature. Um, we are expert in the, uh, the requirements for firescapes, which basically is the FTO3, uh, guidelines, which, uh, basically set out what is a legal firescape. There's a lot of language in there that allows for interpretation, uh, by the building code official in the case of unusual, uh, geometry and/or circumstances, which in this particular case, uh, was the case.
So when do you get introduced to the project? At what stage in the project? Prior to the project originally being approved or just, help me out?
Uh, I would say sometime within the last six to seven months, uh, when the building was, was, uh, at substantial completion. Uh, and we were specifically looking only at the rear, uh, area for the secondary means of egress. The front of the building could not be used, was not doable. Uh, moreover, it's an historic district, so that, that's a secondary, uh, requirement to, to make the rear exit work. Uh, the rear glazed walls, uh, were the main barrier for doing a conventional firescape, which would be something where you'd hang it off the wall. There'd be a basket, a stair, another basket and a drop ladder. That's a conventional firescape.
Okay.
FTO3, uh, sets guidelines for the angles of the stairs, uh, not to exceed 60 degrees, but typically 45 degrees when doable. The baskets have to be five feet, uh, wide. The stairs have to be 22 inches wide. The landings have to be three feet minimum. What we, uh, tried to do, uh, was something that, uh, worked with the geometry of the building.
But can I just, respectfully interrupt? So if you were brought in six months ago, and, or is, are the fire, uh, egresses or the fire escapes, were they already in place?
They were not.
They're not, so they're not, there's no fire?
At that point, the building was not occupied. There was no.
So six months ago, there's no occupants?
Well, no, so I, I did want to correct, uh, George a little bit there. His, his timeline may be a little bit off because we've been, this application's been pending for, for six to eight months. So, so George, you were, you were brought in at, at the time, I, I believe that the applicant was told that the proposed firescape on the original approved plans would not work and that something else needed to be fabricated to make it work, right? So it's probably almost a year.
Almost a year ago.
Or more at, at this point.
But in any case, the rear, the rear facade was completed. Uh, there was no firescape or fire stair or ladder, uh, that had originally proposed, apparently. There was nothing in place and the building was not occupied at that point.
But to counsel's point is you were brought in to look at what was proposed versus, and what could work versus what may not work. Correct?
Correct, George?
I would say that's fair, except that I, uh, I had not seen the, the, the ladder that had been proposed. Subsequently, it was explained to me what, what the idea was. It was a kind of a hinged, uh, ladder, which would be a nice thing if it was approvable. But, um, FTO3 limits a drop ladder or a ladder per se to maximum 12 feet.
So it doesn't sound like they presented plans to you per se to review and say, okay, that makes sense, or does it? It was more discussion?
It was more a, uh, how to create something that would be a workable, uh, firescape that could be approved by a building code official.
Within the last year?
Yes.
So to follow up on that, so the design currently that existed is, um, approved by code?
Yes.
Okay.
It was approved by the, uh, okay. So it, it was deferred from Jersey City to Hoboken because, uh, they wanted to make, have a clean, uh, review that didn't have any potential for conflict of interest or any other reasons. We had done this type of a solution on, uh, a 12-unit condominium in Hoboken where the ladders were excessive. Uh, and we did it on, uh, one or two other buildings as well over the course of the last 10 years, let's just say. Uh, the language of the FTO3 allows for latitude and interpretation by the, the local code official, if it's justified. We were, we tried to make something that was, uh, as safe as possible, um, given the constraints of the, uh, of the glazed openings back there. You really can't run a firescape in front of glass that could, that could potentially shatter. That was.
Can you just explain that 12-foot, you said it can't exceed 12 feet?
Drop ladder. The last.
So I can't have a 14-foot drop ladder, is that accurate?
No, there's a lot of pre-existing non-conforming, but if you're doing a new firescape.
Right.
you need to adhere as closely as you can to the FTO-3 guidelines.
Which requires no more than 12 feet?
Exactly.
In a drop ladder?
Right.
So if they're sectional or combined?
Any, the last, that last ladder going from the basket to grade.
Okay.
In this particular case, we found a section that had brick, which is toward the center, where we basically proposed a five-by-five platform and basically supported by three-by-three steel with footings, allowing access beneath so that you did not have to drop your head. And so that last part of the platform was raised enough so that somebody could walk by. It also aligned with the first-floor spandrel there. The solutions that we had proposed and were reviewed by the building department and the fire department in Hoboken in these, the former projects that we had done, always had a requirement from the platform that was then built that it have a fixed stair to grade as opposed to a ladder. So in effect, we turned the project on its head and had a fixed ladder to an outside non-combustible platform, which was that terrace on the second floor, and then a basket with a ladder to the platform. By then, we've relied on two ladders and a stair to grade. And these were the parameters that had passed muster between the building department and the fire department in the subsequent projects because they could make an interpretation due to the conditions so that they are on the side of life safety. The stair was put in the direction of egress to, in a smoke-hit condition, allow people to move in the correct direction to the west. Secondarily, in a worst case, they could go over the fence into the, and vice versa, if the fire department needed to make a short circuit to get into, fight the property fires. There is access underneath and a three-foot pathway clear to be able to make your way through to, for the adjacent property.
Can you elaborate on that, three feet? Where are we talking?
Okay, so if we're looking at the rear elevation, there is one building to the right before there is a fence that goes into backyards. So assuming that that, those, that party had to take a secondary egress into this back rear easement area, which is approximately five foot six width. It has a battened wall. It's kind of stepped toward the school. One could then move in a straight line with a three-foot. You'd have to deviate just slightly going by the stair. And then that was, that allowed for the egress. We secondarily also added exterior lighting so that in the event of it was nighttime, there would be a lit exitway. And that was required by the building department as well.
So if I'm following your testimony, the staircase is necessary because that is... Hey, Mr. Lewis?
We're bringing up, we're going to bring up some photos as well.
Okay, but I'm looking at a drawing and questioning the witness.
Apologize, I'm sorry.
The staircase in the as-built, that exceeds that 12 feet in height?
From the...
The platform?
Yeah, from the, okay. So there is a terrace on the, if we're looking at the, yeah, there. There is a terrace where we had, we have cut that out and put a basket that projects out a little bit so that there is now a ladder that goes from that small basket right down to our five-foot-five platform.
Understood. Less than 12 feet?
Correct.
Okay, so now I'm on the platform and there's a staircase?
Right.
Why can't that be a ladder? Because that staircase is greater than 12 feet?
No, it's because, as I had explained before, the review on our former projects where we had something where we had a ladder going down, to keep that to 12 feet, meant that we had to then create a new landing, which is that platform.
Right.
And the platform had to have a fixed stair at that juncture. That was the precedent that we had...
To make that a landing, to make it comply with the 12 feet to it?
Right.
Okay.
But it also allowed for clearance underneath. We could have made it lower. The ladder could have been a little bit, from the second floor to this, we could have gone down a little lower, but that would have impeded the movement.
The reason the staircase is necessary is because without the staircase, that platform doesn't qualify
Exactly.
for the 12 feet from the floor above?
Exactly.
Understood.
Playing devil's advocate, if we were to do a fire escape, we would have had to have had posts all the way down supporting the baskets and everything else because we couldn't hang it off the building. It's all glass. Then the death knell on that one is that a blast of glass would make it unsafe to go by that, going down a stair. So this really logically was the safest thing we could come up with that was as close to the FTO-3 as we could make it.
So just for purposes of record, the building is constructed and you get a phone call or an email, I have a secondary mean of egress issue. I hear that you are an expert in this field. Can you take a look at this? Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair.
And you then look at, do you go to the site?
Yes.
And you see this rear wall, you see the glass. Obviously, with your expertise, you understand immediately what the issue is. Is that fair?
Yes.
And you understand, yeah, we can't have hanging ladders. I know why. And then you're retained to attempt to address this with the fire and building department in Hoboken. Is that fair?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do you then interface with the fire official and the building department in Hoboken with various sets of drawings or ideas?
Yes, we prepare a drawing with input from contractors so there's some feedback on the practicality of the actual detail. And we submit to the building department. We sit down with them. We submit an application along with it, explaining the need for a variation. We are granted a variation. And we have signed a document that shows our application plus the actual variation that was approved by them.
Counsel, is that in the packet?
The variation document, I'm not sure if that's in the packet. It's not one of the printsouts I have today.
Mr. Lewis, I hope you're scrolling to find that because you know it's in the packet. And you shouldn't be sharing the screen either.
So we're bringing this up. I believe this is in one of the many submissions on the portal, but I don't recall specifically. If it is.
You may. Is this what's on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel?
Yes.
This is the application. The variation was then subsequently submitted. There should be something else.
All right, what? Counsel? I suspect that you might want to say something?
I just want to ask if this is going to be marked as an exhibit. I didn't want to interrupt, but...
Okay.
And I apologize because I was taking notes and trying to listen. And I do have some questions actually on this whole train of thought for the witness to have a cross-examine. I'm not going to object to it. I just want to make sure that it's marked as an exhibit.
So... Who's controlling the screen, Mr. Lewis? Are you able to zoom out or do you have a cropped image? Ah, good. I know it's shocking, but I'm old enough to still work in paper, so... I'm marking the paper copy as A4. If the witness could identify this for the record?
This is an application for a variation for the fire escape assembly that I designed that describes the justification for the variation from the FTO-3 guideline.
Now, sir, this down the bottom looks like it was signed by a building subcode official with the date of March 15, 2024. Do you see that?
That's correct.
Above it, it looks like somebody wrote in beautiful penmanship, "Applicant Statement. Please state the requirements of the subcode from which a variation is sought. Rear yard fire escape, conformance with FTO-3." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Existing conditions per en, glass curtain wall and per en, do not allow for installation of brackets for a basket, period. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Did you write that?
Yes.
And that was the requirement of the subcode from which the variation is sought?
Yes.
Next question on the application. How would compliance with said provision result in practical difficulties? Explain the nature and extent of these difficulties. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
A drop ladder would not be allowable from second floor since it would be 25 feet long, period. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Please state an alternative to the subcode requirement that will still protect the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants. Full colon, did I read that correctly?
Yes.
A platform with post supports allowing adequate headroom for egress. Fixed stair to grade from platform and fixed ladder to second FL. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Is that your signature, sir?
Yes.
Do you have any reason to believe that you did not sign this on March 11, 2024?
I do not.
Did you sign this on March 11, 2024? And you submitted this to who, sir?
To the Hoboken Building Department. The construction official, Mario Petrino. The building subcode official, Dominic Lunanova. And the fire subcode official, James Hernandez.
And do you have any reason to believe that those are not their signatures on the bottom of this page?
I do not. Those are their signatures.
And do you have any reason to believe that those three individuals did not sign off on this on 3/15/2024?
They did.
And... What does that mean?
That means they approved the design that was submitted, which is the, which was what was subsequently constructed, which would not have gone forward without such approval because they did issue a building permit.
And what is the next step in the process after they sign off on the application for a variation?
They submit a, an approved variation, a form that states that the variation is approved and it is signed by them as well. I had submitted it to one of these gentlemen three months ago that's in this room. And I, you know, I can certainly make sure that I get another one from Mario Petrino because they have that in their file.
Yeah, I think it's important because it says, under the determination, it says, "The application is to be reviewed within 20 business days," so I suspect that happened. But then it says, "After reviewing the facts, we," parentheses, "deny," or parentheses, "grant." And there's no checkbox. You need to deny or grant. So like the historic preservation, they came to a 4-2. It wasn't approved, but it wasn't denied. It was sort of, again, like this whole application in a...
Yeah, I apologize for not having a copy of that, but it definitely exists.
And on, so again, I don't recall if this specific document is in one of the many submissions that we made. But what is in the submissions that we made is the final building approval from them approving of the fire escape.
Can you show that to us?
We could have Jeff pull it up, but we have, I could pass this around too.
We're going to mark it, counsel.
She liked paper.
Because I love paper. So A4 is the application?
So...
Or a variation? A5?
So this is the...
Probably should have handed it to me first, counsel.
Sorry, it's interesting reading.
So that is on the portal. Printed it off from the portal this morning.
Take this back, counsel.
Can I read it?
No.
No? I touched it. The printer's on it.
Mr. Lewis, do you have the, looks like the permit sticker? That's, this I believe was on the portal, Mr. Lewis.
It was on the portal. He would have to download it from the portal. It's not one of the, he has to download it from the portal.
You keep looking at me, counsel. I'd have it on a flash drive, but this, you know, I'm just... You never do. This isn't a new room, Mr. Lewis?
So counsel, a question while they're hunting. On condition 15, it says, "Upon approval of the certificate by the, certificate of appropriance, I guess by the HPC, or an approval granted by the Jersey City Planning Board, deviations from the granted approval as must be approved by the HPC, except in cases of emergency affecting public safety, health, and welfare." Does this fall under that umbrella?
So we're getting through all of that testimony? So we're getting through all of that testimony? And we're going to make decisions as to when certain things would have needed to be brought and approved, but I think the applicant has stipulated that they didn't necessarily follow.
That I get. The only thing I'm trying to say is is when I filter this in my limited brain, will I use the measure of an emergency affecting public safety, health, and welfare? Is that a fair enough? Like a tool to determine whether or not this fell under a an appropriate approach, at least under this particular item?
So we're going to help you answer that question.
I love you. Thank you.
Okay, up on the screen, City of Hoboken. Eight seven bright permit number two zero one nine three one four one plus B approval for building fire escape checked off final two dash three dash 25 with the initials of an inspector. I read that correctly, sir?
Yes.
Counsel, I'm marking this as A5. Counsel, any objection to me marking this as A5?
None whatsoever. My attorney has been waiving her copy of it.
All right. I believe I saw this on the portal as well. Sir, what are we looking at?
This indicates the building department approval for the construction of this this fire escape.
So A4 was the application for a variation seeking to be permitted to construct the fire escape that you testified to was actually constructed at the site at your design and direction. Is that fair?
That's fair.
And that was in March of 2024, and it was signed off by the officials as your testimony that yes, those officials granted the variation. Commissioner properly pointed out that it was not checked, denied, or granted. You say there is another step in the process where after the application for the variation is granted, there's a variation actually issued. That's a document that you don't have here this evening, but one better than that document, as you've stated, is here's the approval of that fire escape. Is that fair?
That's fair.
And the variation was sought in March of 2024, and the actual fire escape was constructed and then approved in February of 2025. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair.
And do you know whose initials those are on A5?
DL would be Dominic Lunanova, who is the building subcode official for Hoboken.
Who is one of the gentlemen that signed the actual application for the variation. So that is A5. Counsel, I still want that piece in between. Sir, do you have any other testimony or information that you'd like to present to the board?
No, I do not.
So there were some photographs that I think, counsel, you're going to want to have the witness go through and explain.
Sure. So Jeff, if you pull those up at this time. So this was submitted to the portal. This is on portal. We're just going to pull up some photos of the fire escape. We're going to show this from a few different angles. There's some some measurements on on here as well. Jeff, maybe the next one. I think it's a little bit better. Yeah, there you go. So George.
Was there one without dimensions on it?
Yeah.
Let's start at the beginning.
Pull that one up, please. Is that the whole screen, Jeff?
It looks pretty good.
All right. So.
So this is the four posts. Those are three inch diameter posts with.
Sir, let's qualify the photograph. Did you take this photograph?
I did not.
Are you familiar with the site?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the fire escape?
Yes.
Does this accurately depict the fire escape as constructed?
Yes, it does.
When was the last time you were at the site?
About February, March.
And when you were there in February, was this what the fire escape looked like?
Yes.
Okay. And this was obviously the result of your design and the approvals A4 and A5?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to mark this one as A6. I'm going to identify it as photograph. How should we identify it, sir? Direction, perhaps?
Direction west.
Facing west?
Yeah, elevation toward the west.
Okay.
So again, our objective was to have a minimal impact on the on the design, but what you would you don't see behind that brick spandrel, that horizontal band, which is about looks to be about 18 inches, is that.
Left side of the photograph, right side?
Right side, yeah. Is that there's a glass wall and frame behind that. So that's really just a, what would you call it? A cavity, you know, a spandrel. It's not structural. And so trying to tie brackets into that would have been not doable. And that was the decision that we came to solution being a four poster with separate column points, three inch by three inch steel, as close to the building as possible, but allowing for the proper footings, 42 inch deep.
So when you say we came to the decision, who's we?
Collaborated with the with the contractor to make sure that we had our best solutions.
And is it your understanding the only authority you needed to present this to was Hoboken?
Yes.
Did you work out these plans beforehand with Hoboken at all with fire in Hoboken?
I I worked it. I worked them out and presented, signed and sealed drawings to the building department, four copies, which is their typical requirement for review. They reviewed it and we had a meeting.
Okay.
And the fire department, as well as the fire subcode official, participated in the approval of this particular design.
So that was going on between A4 in March of 2024, review process, construct, and then sign off in February of 2025. So an 11-month span interacting with the city officials regarding.
That's fair.
Here's the project. Here's what I'm doing. And them saying, yes, this is.
Yes.
Acceptable.
Okay.
Okay, next photograph, counsel?
This, you know, shows how the door is an in-swinging door. The prior presentation by Mr. Cornell.
Let's identify the photo, A7. Which way is this photo facing?
You're looking east. And to the left shows an in-swinging door.
So that in-swinging door is the door that we were discussing on the ground floor as built and the potential conflict between that staircase and the door?
Right. It wouldn't have hit the door. If it's if it were to swing open, it wouldn't have hit the door because we do. The door is about is a three foot, I believe.
The door wouldn't hit the staircase.
It would not have hit the staircase, but it could conceivably have impeded somebody moving toward us when we're looking at the photograph if it were to swing out, but it does swing in.
Okay. Can it swing out or it can only swing in?
I I am. I don't know, but I I assume it would only swing in.
Okay. And? Anything else about this photograph that's significant to you or to us?
Well, I I think we went to great lengths to make sure that a person could walk underneath and have three foot clearance, be able to being able to work their way through that area, which we are all recognizing does not belong to the the property. It's an easement. It's a continuous easement.
Okay. Counsel, do we have a copy of that easement by any chance? It was on the portal, but I am sure we are going to to get to that as well. Do we have? You have any questions about this, Mr. Joseph?
I I do want to show the photos with the dimensions as well if we're move on to the next one.
Okay.
I also believe that the school was surprised of the design and they did not they did not have any objection to it. As you there on the right, you can see how the wall steps, so it gets wider to the right.
All right. So this is going to be marked as A8. Can you identify this photograph?
This photograph is looking toward the east. On the right is clearly shown a battened wall, which is on the school property, as is the rear yard. It shows that there is 36 inch clear from the building to the edge of the stair and the stair width of 24 inches. Something. I think we had one post, a one edge there that had a if you looked at it this orthogonally, that is straightforward, we see a slightly narrower. I think that's a 34 inch. But if if you if you.
Did you mark this photograph, sir?
I did not.
The the measurements were taken by the the owner of the property, the applicant.
Is that individual going to testify to these measurements?
No.
Okay. Take this photograph off the screen. I'm unmarking A8. Sir, there was a photograph that apparently somebody had placed dimensions on. When you designed this fire escape. You prepared a drawing. Did it show the dimension between the face of the wall and the staircase?
Yes.
Did it show the dimensions within the space underneath the? Landing?
Yes.
Did it show the dimension between all four of the posts?
Yes.
Did it show, I believe you testified, 42 inch footings?
Deep, yes.
42 inches deep?
Right.
For those four posts?
Right.
Hold the landing, right?
Right.
Did it show that footing diagram and the dimension of those footings?
Yes.
Counsel, do you have those documents?
I I don't have those documents, no.
Okay.
Hoboken Building Department has them.
But you had prepared them, sir?
Yes.
So you would have copies of them?
I would have a PDF of them. I could.
Right.
Easily get.
In your file as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to see a copy of that.
Counsel? Can? Let me ask it this way. Do you object to the dimensions in that photograph?
That photograph with the red dimensional markings?
Yes.
That board counsel has unmarked as exhibit A8. Yes, I do. Yes, I do object because, as I understand, we will not be hearing from the person who actually drew those marks on.
Correct.
One of them I saw was 24 inches.
Right.
I have a lot of questions about that, and I understand that this is it's not this witness's creation. So I do understand also that apparently there may be documents existing that people might be able to find copies of that might have dimensions that were drawn by this witness that he could testify to.
Right.
So, you know, I I I'm not going to preclude the introduction of those at a later time. I would. I do have some questions for this witness and actually, you know, right now, I think there's something that's very important to straighten out. Again, not to trip him up, just to straighten out the record.
We're going to get there.
But yes, and so I'm saying I'll ask him about his testimony tonight. I'll ask him if I can reserve. I'll ask him next time.
Well, so here's where I'm going, right? I want to see the drawing that resulted in the staircase.
Yes, me too. Thank you.
I'll put it to the board this way. I assume the board wants to see that.
Absolutely. Yes.
So. I don't want to lose the 45 minutes I have left.
Oh, is that is that all we have left?
That's all we have left.
Oh, my God. Okay.
But that being said. I want this and I want this at this juncture, right? So. In answer to the commissioner's question, there is a agreement that's on the portal that I believe is a recorded easement. You want to mark that, counsel? Do you object to that?
If you're referring to.
I am.
The the document that reduces the existing easement to writing.
Yep.
I have no objection to its authenticity and to marking it.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's very kind of you.
Shocking.
Shocking. Not making a big deal of something for once.
All right. So. We're going to mark. Mr. Lewis? Are you pulling it up?
I was looking on. I'm looking for it.
It's in this 54 inch slide deck. You got it. I'm charging everybody tonight. All three of them. We're adjourning right now. We're going to. Since we've stricken A8 from the record, we're now going to mark this document as A8. Counsel, for purposes of the record, do you want to identify number of pages? It looks like. It's.
Yeah, 12 12 total pages. It's a recorded easement executed between the owner of 87 Bridge Street and the Jersey City Public Schools, the owner of the adjacent property.
Dated February 7th, 2020. Yes, recorded on February 13th, 2020, in book 9472, page 530, Hudson County Register.
That's what I was looking for, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Want to mark any of the letters, maybe? Is A9 or 10, counsel? Those you want to object to, right?
I don't know what letters you referred to.
Yes, you do.
No, I don't, actually. I really don't. Sorry. I've got a letter I'd like to mark. Marking letters. And I've got a bunch of emails I'm going to mark and introduce, but I don't, I don't know what we're talking about here. And I'm not prepared to mark them.
Understood.
If we have to, I would prefer to do it with my witnesses.
So so at, at this juncture, we're going to go into discussing the, the easement. That's what we want to do with the remainder of the time.
So
given counsel has several witnesses and exhibits about this.
Would you prefer not to do it now? I'm not going to tell you how to move your case.
I, I don't, I don't see that we finish the discussion and the back and forth and the entering of all the exhibits about the easement.
All right. So then-
At this point.
I don't disagree. I appreciate it if you guys could spare the board's time with either fighting or not fighting over-
And set up a-
What's part of the record, right?
Yeah.
What's the record?
So I think that the two of you can work that out. The board's in pursuit of the truth.
Are you, right, and, and-
So the more we fight, fine. Everybody's got rights, but, you know, I think, I think from the board's perspective, you know, we're probably going to allow more than we're not going to allow. And we can accept that things are as they're purported to be. I don't think anybody's out here-
Correct.
Making up-
Yes, that's why I'm in, I, this is, I tell people I'm a trial lawyer, and that I have panels of judges all the time. But what I don't have is the friggin' weeks-long fights over an obviously authentic document, trying to get it in. So, and I just, the penny just dropped. I think you're talking about the letters back and forth to the school relatively recently. Right. And I've got some of those myself, so.
Right. So you guys will work that out?
We'll, we'll work that out. And perhaps with the remainder of the time we have, we do have some brief planning testimony. That might be something we can get through.
I have an immediate, quick question for this witness. I apologize to bring it up again. I think it's a problem with the dates. That fire escape was up as of November 2023, and possibly before then. And I think that Mr. Wiles- testified that that document, his application that was, I think, signed 31124 and dated 31524, was before the construction. It was not. And I wanted to give him a chance to clarify that. I'm not playing gotcha. I just want to make sure everybody knows what the timeline was. I'm sure there were documents that were exchanged before the stair was constructed. And I'm sure he did that appropriately, and that those drawings that we're talking about, we'll see when they were dated. But that document up there did not predate the staircase. It post-dated it by at least five months and probably more, like six, seven, eight, nine months, whenever it actually was constructed. And it may be that you don't know when they actually built the stair. But I just wanted to clarify that. I don't want to play gotcha. I just want to iron that out. It's been a long time. Everybody's memory can play little tricks on them.
So I think when he reviews his file and he gets his drawings, we'll, we'll get clarity on that.
Clarity on that.
Very possible.
Yeah.
But also, stated on the record, you came on about, you said about a year ago to the, or about there.
Yeah, something like that.
I, I understood when he said six or seven months, that he came in six or seven months before the end of the construction. That was what I understood. And then I heard you say, no, six, I, I, I think it was, that staircase has been up for almost two years by now. So you must have been hired well before then.
So George will review his, his records and with the other documents he's submitting. Prepare an accurate timeline. That's-
That is fair, because to the fact that the Hoboken letter submitted, the work to be done was in March of '24. So that's way over a year ago.
It was clearly, that March of '24 was clearly post-dating the erection of the existing stair. What documents predated it? I'd have to go back on the portal and see if they have stuff that's predated. I just don't know in my head. But that document was definitely long after the stair was built. And I don't want the witness to have been led into an understandable human mistake by, by his memory and, you know, by the exhibits and the discussion with, with the board.
Yeah, but what's problematic about that is, is that the document, as is noted here and is on the record, was March of '24.
I know.
And it neither has a check for denial or approval.
And it definitely-
And that's why I think counsel, and chairwoman wants that second step letter, too.
Right.
So, thank you.
We're going to get whatever documentation there is, and it's going to be what it is. And, you know, nobody's, we're going to hear it, and we'll figure out. Some things post-date. It's not going to come as a shock to anybody. That's why we're here in the first place, right? We've obviously done things that were not necessarily in the right order.
But I think to your point is, it belabor's the frustration of, you know, you've said that maybe two or three times today, counsel. And here we are with this gentleman who just came up and spoke eloquently, and, and trying to get clarity, we've got more befuddlement. So.
Agreed.
I have one more question. When this, when you first came on the job, I figured I asked you this, but just for clarity, because I'm getting a little confused. Was there any other type of a fire escape or anything like that? Was there anything before you got involved?
I did not see anything, no.
Okay. All right.
You know, I, I did the plans, and work was done after the plans were approved.
At your recollection. Okay.
Do you know was the building occupied at that point? Mr. Cornell doesn't know. Do you know?
I, I'm not sure. I don't, I know they were, they were still doing construction inside.
Okay.
All right. Cameron? I'm told it's September 30th.
Hmm. Yep. Got to pay rent tomorrow.
I'm told. Told there's only four regular meetings left this year.
That is correct.
When can we carry this application to?
My suggestion would be November 25th or December 9th, whatever the board feels would be more suitable.
Now, those are regular meetings.
Those are regular meetings, yes.
Yes. So is your concern that we may not have a quorum two days before Thanksgiving? That's a legitimate concern.
Any chance of another special?
Not for me.
We're going to go to, no, December 9th? So mark your calendars, and you guys are going to figure it out. You're going to come up with all the other documents and close the universe, at least for me. Okay? I, I don't know what, what to say.
I, I, and I depend on Mr. Joseph. I mean, mine are, you know, mine are ready. And I'll mark mine as my, as my, my witnesses go along. I wasn't expecting this.
Okay. December 9th, 5:30. It is a regular meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this will be under old business, so.
Mm-hmm. Right. Think there's a resolution?
There's a resolution. I just want to-
Yes. We're going to find this out right now.
Can I move on with my resolution?
Yes, please move on with the resolution.
At this time, I have one resolution. Resolution, City of Jersey City Planning Board, case P2025-0159. Applicant is 279 Communipaw Realty LLC. Address is 279 Communipaw Avenue, New Jersey City, New Jersey, block 20303, lot 21, decided on September 9, 2025. Memorialize on September 30, 2025. Application for extension of existing approval. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Stamato.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gungadon.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. All in favor to memorialize resolution?
Motion to adjourn, or do we need executive?
Do you want to talk to Santo?
Maybe amongst us. I don't know if executive or not.
So we're going to have a meeting after this. We're going to have, we're going to- We're going to make a motion to-
Santo, the board would like to have executive session.
Like, second.
Madam Chair, I-
At this time, the board will go into executive session. Can I have a second?
Second.
We'll return back in 10 minutes.